Please stand for the prejudice.
The right to privilege should apply in the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this global, without any justice or law.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Giraud?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch? And Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Item two, approval of minutes. Recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes of March 8th and March 11th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any? Ayes. Motion is approved, carried.
We have a student delegation, but I'd like to announce that I add an additional item to the agenda between when it was posted and tonight. That item appears on the list under personnel. Item A. I'll read it now and I'll read it again for a vote. So everyone knows. The item is recommend approval to appoint Kylene Cooper as Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School Principal, effective May 21, 2021, at a pro-rated salary of $95,600 and other benefits as outlined in the Act 93. So we will, I will read that again at the appropriate time and the board can vote accordingly. Going to go back up to the agenda items under public address. And I understand we have a young lady from Sagertown High School to present her update. Could you just introduce yourself and?
Hello, my name is Lauren Edwards from the Panther Press. And I am here to update you on what's going on here at Sagertown High School. Scheduling a beginning for students in grades seven through 11. All students will input a schedule online and also complete a paper copy. Promise scheduled for May 15th. It will be held at Sagertown Elementary School. Tickets will be on sale although through April 16th. This year's theme is the fabulous eighties. The baseball team returned from the Ripken Experience at Myrtle Beach where they finished with a 1-and-2 record. On March 12th, Junior Hunter Robinson placed fifth at the PI AA Wrestling Championship in Hershey. Eighth grade wrestler Carter Beck placed second at the Keystone State Junior Wrestling Championship on April 1st through 3rd. Nick Crabb placed seventh. The first home volleyball match will be Tuesday against Cathedral Prep. You can tune into the livestream at all Panther Press media. We had our third and final ASVAB test at the school this year on March 25th. Fourteen juniors who were absent December, in December during the original ASVAB exam dates were given an opportunity to take it. They will receive their results on April 13th. Panther Press Editor-in-Chief Amanda Crowell has won first place in news writing in the Pennsylvania School Press Association Student Journalism State Championship. This is a writing contest where journalists from across the state are given the same prompts and have one hour to write the story. Amanda is the first Panther Press journalist who earned this award. Thank you for your time. Looking forward to keeping you informed about events at Sagertown High School. As always, you can follow us at Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. I understand you're a freshman?
Yes.
This is your first of many trips to the school board meeting, I'm assuming, correct?
I believe so.
Fantastic. Also, Ms. Hetrick, is Amanda going to be able to come to a meeting?
She can.
In May maybe?
Yes.
Could you repeat that award again, just so?
Okay, so the Pennsylvania School Press Association has what's called a writing contest. So the kids all get the same information and they have one hour to write the story and then you send it. They're judged by national judges, JDA judges. And this is the first time we've won first place for news writing. And I was telling Dr. Glasspool, Amanda actually beat the girl who is the Pennsylvania Journalist of the Year this year. She beat her by one point in news writing, which is probably the most competitive category. There were over 170 entries from across the state in all of the categories. So Amanda Crowell is probably the most decorated student journalist that we've had at the Panther Press. And she's graduating and leaving us this year, but fortunately, the future appears to be in good hands. But it's a huge accomplishment for her. So we're very excited about that and we'll be doing more to celebrate that. You know, as the results become official, next week the PSPA will announce them publicly. And it's okay for me to announce them here. I wanted to let you know before next month. And Lauren did that well, so thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you both.
Yep.
I don't believe there is a PA representative comments. There aren't registered citizens comments today. We're going to start moving down through the agenda, beginning with athletics. Item A. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Marcus Hayes as an assistant football coach at Maplewood, effective March 23rd.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's been a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion is approved. The motion is carried.
Item B. Recommend approval to purchase a new school board from Demands Team Sports for Sagertown High School, as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
It's been, we have a motion. It'll be seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say real quick, I've gotten some feedback from people. I think this is a good step for the board. I know that COVID's been hard on Booster Club. And this is a scoreboard that's been in place in Sagertown here for 40 years. I think we got it from Allegheny College for free. So I don't think we can say that this was a wasted resource and ideally we have 40 years out of this one. And I think it'll be money well spent.
It's actually a long overdue. I ran the scoreboard six, seven, eight years ago. And it was horrible then. There were so many problems that I can't believe this lasted this long. So I think it's a good move.
I'm just going to say just last thing. Being a school board member, running the clock, had little grinner's games. You hear a lot of complaints about it. So I'm glad that this will be something that we were addressing.
Anybody else? If not, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is carried.
Education Committee, Mr. Brooks, Chairman. Item A, there was an update that was given in, on Tuesday. Item B. Recommend approval of the attached 21-22 Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth Agreement with Bethesda Lutheran Services.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion is carried.
Item C. Recommend approval to create and staff a 7th through 12th grade therapeutic classroom operated at Cambridge Springs High School. Internal staffing requirements include one special education teacher and one mental health professional.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this just going to be for students at the Cambridge or is it going to be for all three campuses?
Any Penn Crest student.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion. Motion is carried.
Item D. Recommend approval of the corresponding Science and Social Studies course for grade-level textbooks, consumables, and online resources at a cost not to exceed $515,000.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. The motion is carried.
Ken, what was that exact quote? Do you remember? It's on here. It was under, it was like 480?
Came in at actually 475.
Okay. So, you know, we'll just leave ourselves that a little room in case we forgot anything. But we got a better, Ken got us a better quote, so thank you. Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, Chairman. We had a GISA update. Project is on track and moving well, actually ahead of schedule. Item B. Recommend approval of the attached one-year contact extension agreement with RD Wycoff Transportation.
Committee, I think they recommended.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion is carried.
Item C. Recommend approval to accept the competitive bid from True Build Construction, the amount of $9,800 for the Cambridge Springs Field House roof repair.
The committee made that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this time? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is carried.
Item D. Recommend approval to award bid amount of $31,599 to J&amp;T Paving of Greenville for the Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School parking area drainage improvements. This was added early today. We had a bid opening yesterday and had an opportunity to check references in bed, J&amp;T paving. So I just want to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to take a look at that. And those bid amounts, you can see here on the side, that they were the lowest, they were the most responsible, and had all of the information. So I just want to make sure that the board, I wanted to clarify since it was a late item.
We have committee make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carried.
Item E. Recommend approval of Megan Dalton as a student transportation driver for PM Bus Incorporated.
The committee made that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. Item A. Recommend approval of the attached treasury reports.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, sir. Motion is carried.
Item B. Recommend approval of the attached dispersments.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is carried.
Item C. Recommend approval of the 21-22 Crawford County Career and Technology Center budget in the amount of $5,4,559 for the operating budget and $712,549 for debt service budget.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item D. Recommend approval of the attached Internet Service Agreement for 21-22 with Northwest Tri County IU5.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item E. Recommend approval of the attached agreement with Cisco and IU5.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mark. Motion carried.
Item F. Recommend approval of the attached agreement with Laramore Advertising.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item G. Recommend approval of the attached agreement with Woodring LLC.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we have a request?
Someone else?
Yeah. Rock call please.
Brooks?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
D. Francesco?
Yes.
Will? Giraud?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Johnston?
Stane.
And Valeski?
Yes.
That would approve? Okay. Item H. Recommend approval of the Sagertown High School Young Conservatives Club.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Mark.
Item I Personnel Committee, Mr. Brooks, Chairman. Item A, this is the added item. Recommend approval to appoint Kylene Cooper as Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School Principal, effective May 21, 2020, at a pro-rated salary of $95,600, other benefits as outlined in the Act 93.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Congratulations.
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 Thank you very much.
We usually.
I'm smiling over here.
Item B. Recommend approval to accept the resignations from the following employees.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? I didn't hear it.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item C. Recommend approval of leave of absence for Jake Smith from his duties as maintenance manager assigned to Sagertown Attendance Area, effective March 17, 2021, and continue for up to 60 days.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Timothy?
Yes.
Got a second? Can we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item D. Recommend approval for a support professional Act 93 employee to access an additional 45 days in accordance with the Support Professional Act 93 compensation plan.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item E. Recommend approval to employ Alex Cummings as a long-term substitute mathematics teacher assigned to Sagertown Junior Senior High School, effective March 29, 2021.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item F. Recommend approval to employ Mackenzie Ashbaugh as a COVID compensatory services tutor at a rate of $25 per hour, effective April 9.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item G. Recommend approval for Ernestina Simcheck to transfer from her current two-and-a-half-hour cafeteria employee position in Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High to a custodian position assigned to Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item H. Recommend approval to advertise for six 10-week, 40-hour-per-week temporary seasonal employees.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
I didn't hear the second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item I. Recommend approval to advertise for two summer technology interns with a stipend of $4,500.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item J. Recommend approval for the following volunteers.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Policy Committee, Mr. D. Francesco, Chairman. Item A. Recommend approval of the policy review and/or revisions as listed and attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item B. Recommend approval for a purely attached policy, 6-11 purchases budgeted.
The committee made that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item C is not an actual item tonight. It is the first reading for six policy, four policies in the 600 financial section. Item D is also not a voting item, just information. We'll do another reading on this. It's for the 21-26 Superintendent Evaluation Tool. Safe Schools Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. The Board Safety Committee met on March 18th and discussed a variety of safety and security concerns. The committee's next scheduled committee meeting is July 14, 2021. Crawford County Career and Technology Services Report, Mr. Johnson, Representative. They report this evening?
I do not. I had something to work the last minute, couldn't attend.
Thank you. Intermediary Number Five, Report, Mr. Brooks, Representative.
Nothing to report. Great meeting.
DSP Legislature Report, Mr. Bullock. Got anything to report?
I have nothing new and/or exciting.
Any new business this evening, Mr. D. Francesco?
No, sir.
Board Member Remarks?
You want to start with Mr. Valeski?
Sure. Congratulations, Kylene. That's when you're repositioned as the Cambridge High School Principal. I was very impressed with the interview and I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also would like to congratulate Kylene. I know she does a fantastic job at Sagertown and I know she'll move her talents a bit north and do a wonderful job out there as well. Amanda Crowley, if I got her name correctly, I hope I did. Congratulations to her.
Crowley.
Okay, Crowley. Anyway, Amanda, good job with the journalism. No, that is fantastic and that's a very coveted award and we're very proud of you. Other than that, good luck to the spring sports teams and I'll pass it over to Jeff.
Kind of touch on some of the things that Lauren said. When wrestling wrapped up, Sagertown had three state medalists, two junior highs, second place and a seventh place. And a varsity wrestler got fifth, so that was fantastic. As a team, they were the region co-champs. Cambridge Springs High School Basketball, Boys and Girls, both District 10 championship game, great job. On a different note, it's kind of disappointing that we're coming into volleyball season and Maplewood doesn't have a boys volleyball team. Oh, I, it's one of the most storied programs in our district with multiple state titles. And I'm hoping that, I know that the kids out there made a decision to try to keep it so that they can keep the program alive next year. So I'm hoping that the Maplewood community can come together and keep that program alive. Because that really is one of the few programs that's won a team state championship in Penn Crest. Speaking of Maplewood, if we can keep the McFadden family in our thoughts and prayers. Jesse's going through some medical issues. The work session on Tuesday, there was a budget presentation. I think that's up on the website now.
Main page.
On the main page. It was a great presentation as always. And budgets are one of the things people are really concerned about on the school board, so check that out. Always looking for input on that. And Kylene, congratulations. Until you have the job, then you have our sympathy. I think that's how it always goes with any new job. But it's great to have people that come into the district and stand out the way you did, so thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Amanda. She did a pretty awesome presentation for her first time standing before a big board. I can't remember the young fellow's name that did your blueprints.
Wade Pearl? Wade Pearl.
He done an awesome job, so I'd like to thank him as well.
Sure.
And I'll make sure he gets recognized at the career meeting next week.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Can't say I hate to see you go because we're still going to have you and I know you're going to do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, thanks to Jeff, there's not a whole lot to go over. I do want to say congratulations, Kylene. I know you're going to do a great job out there at Cambridge. It's nice to have a new addition. For the young lady that did the presentation for us, for somebody new, she did a very good job. Lauren. Lauren did a fantastic job. And with all the spring sports and stuff, the one thing, with all the news, been depressing all day and stuff. When I turned on to 198 tonight, there was just like a glimmer of hope. The softball fields were full, the kids were having a ball, the parents were together again. And it's just a blessing to see all that happening, so it was very exciting. And just good luck to the rest of the spring sports and everybody be safe and go ahead.
Mrs. Davis?
It's all been covered, I think. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you. Your presentation was very impressive. Looking forward to seeing more. Just again, you're right, to come around the corner and see all those kids out on the ball field, just put a little more of a spring in my step, I know that. Keep doing what we're doing, keep moving forward. That's for the kids. That's all I can say.
What I like to say is that I've been working with Mr. Glasspool pretty much. I've been bugging him, glad of questions. And I can guarantee to the board and to the public out there. They work every day and try to make it the life better for our students. And of course, you know, we have to take care of the teachers and the principals. And congratulations to the new principal. I'm sure that he's going to be a team worker to keep, to have the district going, to excel, and help our students in any way we can, that you can.
Thank you.
Mark, you're the president. You get a less word if you want to say anything.
Glad to be back. And I will, I, no, I don't, don't need, uh, they, I'm, uh, encourage, hopefully I am going to be encouraging.
Awesome. Good news. That'd be great. Good news. Thank you.
Looking forward to it, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Any more announcements?
Just one announcement and if you pay attention, I typed it in while we were here. The board met executive session- The board met executive session on April 6th and April 8th to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second. All aye? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you said adjourn.
You can ask, they voted opposed.